Yeah, so first of all, thanks for coming. I know it's late in the day. We wanted to do it at this hour so that the physicians could, as many as possible, could make it. I'm respectful of everybody's time, so we're going to try to move through this. But let me start by saying, you know, this is 14 months for me, and it's been a great 14 months. And it's been a great 14 months, first and foremost, because of the people, because of you. You know, I think we're up to some good, and I'm going to share some of that with you. But I think the next eight to 10 years is going to, you know, have a few speed bumps, but they're all good speed bumps. So what I'm going to do is spend about 20 minutes just updating you on the plan that we rolled out, I guess, back in May. Some of the progress, some of the future. I'm going to leave the last 30 minutes for, to talk about curriculum reform, because I know that's big on everybody's agenda. And I promise that we will get to as many questions as we can. But I also promise that, beginning today, we're going to meet monthly in perpetuity, because we need everybody on board, everybody engaged. And we can't, I don't know how to do it without you, to be candid. And I think the people I work with day-to-day would say, "We can't do it without you either." So we want you to tell us how to do it, and I mean that very candidly. So, you know, there is a sense of urgency, and it's a good sense of urgency. One of the things that I've learned in the past 12 months is that the Dartmouth Board of Trustees is, clearly gets that for Dartmouth to remain a top university, the health sciences, the medical school, the hospital, you know, has to be a critically important part of that. You probably know almost three-quarters of the research funding at Dartmouth is in the medical school. And we've got this wonderful opportunity with the new leadership in the hospital to really put our oars in the water at the same time and move forward. I do want to take just 10 seconds to acknowledge Jim Weinstein, who is here. Jim has been a wonderful partner from day one, and great leader, doing all the right things in the hospital. A lot of heavy lifting to do there. We're going to do it together, and we're going to create this future with you. So, you know, I always like to go back to what we stand for. At the end of the day, for me, and I hope for you, it's about improving the lives of the people we serve, adding value to the lives of the students, the faculty, the patients, the residents. And we do that through innovations in learning, discovery, and healing. When you're having a bad day, you know, go back to that, because it's very powerful and very anchoring. Here's what I'm going to cover today, and we're going to do it quickly. We're going to talk about curriculum redesign. I'm going to talk a little bit about the guiding principles that Jim and I have laid out. Want to mention the LCME site visit, because it's just one of those things we have to deal with, and we need, we need all of you to help with us. Talk about research recruitment, some new buildings, a little bit about the APT work that Leslie Henderson is leading, Faculty Council, which is a new organization here. Briefly mention TDI. Talk a little bit about the Development and Communications Plan in the medical school, and then the funding plan, and then we'll talk a little bit about next steps. So it's a lot of stuff, but I think it's important for you to hear about it. Remember, the, this is the first time in the history of Dartmouth that there is an institution-wide strategic plan. That's actually a very good thing for us. It's a good thing for us, because, as I said, the medical school is a critical portion of that plan. The university is going to play a critical central role in fundraising for us in the medical school and in the hospital. And quite frankly, they're going to jump-start the plan. And so, you know, I put DMS DH, because Jim and I are committed to doing this together. I want everybody to get that. We're doing this together. We win as a team. And I also want to be clear that, in order to make this happen, you know, we've got to be able to execute on the plan. That takes people. We've got to be able to fund the plan. That takes money. We need things like technology to enable and drive the plan. We need some buildings to house the plan, and we need some fundraising to sustain the plan. So this is kind of our working, our working model, if you will. These are the five strategic initiatives that we set forth, I think, eight to 10 months ago. The board has bought into them. The Board of Overseers of the medical school has bought into them. They're all important. You know, operational and fiscal discipline is just as important as growing the research enterprise. I show them to you, in part, to remind you, but also to point out that they're very aligned with the key strategic initiatives at DH, you know, which is about being leaders in value and creating an integrated health network in northern New England, having distinctive research and education that improves patient care, and it's all about improving population health. So these are very aligned. They fit together, positions us well to do what we, what we need to do. These are the guiding principles. There are others that I think Jim and I are on board with very much, this notion about identifying a clear set of shared directions and areas for collaboration. We're trying to anticipate some of the most important challenges that are coming down the pike. We know we're moving to risk in healthcare. DH is a leader in this space, so we're pretty well positioned to handle some of these risk contracts that are inevitable. We want to capitalize on our synergies. This notion of One DH MC is really important, you know, for you to, there's no us and them, there's no we-they, it's, you know, we are one. You know, we really want to hold ourselves to the highest standards. You know, it's not about being above average, it's about being excellent in everything that we do, and we're working on a shared dashboard or scorecard that looks at education metrics, research metrics, patient care metrics, community metrics, and so that we can do this as a team. This is the only slide I'm going to show on curriculum reform, because I'm going to ask Tim Leahy to take that over in about 20 minutes. But you may recall that about six months ago, we pulled together a steering committee to start to look at curriculum redesign. Now, why did we do that? The reason we are doing it is because we think we have a responsibility to prepare our students to be leaders of change in this volatile, unpredictable, rapidly changing world. They're prepared well to practice medicine in the conventional sense. Our students get great residencies, they do very well on the boards, but there's new domains where they need to become masters, healthcare delivery science being one, understanding how to manage your own practice and measure it, understanding healthcare disparities and some of the global issues. And that's the work that this involves. More fundamentally, it's looking at a redesign of the existing curriculum. And Tim will show you some data a little bit later that is pretty compelling, that we need, we need some reform. Tim Leahy, who many of you know, has taken on this role as sort of the project director of curriculum reform. Tim, I think, is very inclusive. We need hundreds of you to help us with this. And I'm going to let Tim talk a little bit more about that. He's actually going to do this with one of our students, because our students have been at the table from day one advising us on how to do this. We have our LCME site visit in March of 2013. That may seem like a long way away, but in LCME time, that's pretty soon. And the LCME is the Liaison Committee on Medical Education. It's a branch of the AMC. They're the accrediting body. They visit every medical school every four to eight years, and our site visit is coming up. We have a number of deficiencies that we are working on correcting. Obviously, this is one we want to hit out of the park. There will be LCME site visitors who come on campus for three or four days. They will talk to dozens of people, students, faculty. There's a checklist of at least 100 things that we've got to, you know, get right. Rand Swenson is, all of you know Rand, Chair of Anatomy, is taking this on as the lead, but is working literally with dozens of people to get this right. So I just want to get you a heads up, Rand's going to be asking the various departments to help out with this. I want to talk a little bit about the research plan. I think all of you know Dwayne, our Senior Associate Dean for Research, and you know Alan, who is the head of our CTSA synergy. We shared this notion of building interdisciplinary programs with you many months ago. This list is not meant to be inclusive, it's just meant to list the programs where we already have considerable strengths. The exception being bioinformatics, where we're not strong yet, but we think it is such a critically important program that we're going to get strong. And these are, and these are alphabetized, so, you know, there's, you know, nothing is more important than the other. And then we talked about these cross-cutting programs, which are also alphabetized. They're all important. And so, you know, there's broad agreement, we need to grow biomedical informatics, and with Doc Oss coming, that is now initiated. Biostatistics is an area that Jim Weinstein and the Provost and I, and many of you, think we need to grow. And Dr. Chris Amos, Chris, yeah, Chris, and Julie, just stand up for a second. I know that, this way we do it in New Hampshire. So, Chris Amos is an internationally known biostatistician from MD Anderson. You can sit down now. And his wife, Julie McCatchen, is an expert in international healthcare, and this is their second visit. We're very excited about having them potentially come to Dartmouth. And so, I invited them tonight, so they could see what we're up to. It's great to have you both here. Clinical and translational research, genetic imaging. This is not just, this is not meant to exclude anything, but these are the programs we think we need to focus on for now, and I'm sure there will be, will be many, many more. I just want to point out some of the successes. And if there are some I've left out, I want to apologize. So these are, you know, what we call mega grants. These are grants that bring in more than a million dollars a year, and this is just the past year. Bill Green's COBRI was renewed. Ron Taylor got a new COBRI, and it's on research education, specific for educating undergrads, which I think is pretty cool. Hal Schwartz hit it out of the park, two big grants. Lisa Marsh, who is a new member of the faculty, and Jason Moore's grant also got funded. So, you know, it's pretty remarkable that the lifetime value of these six awards is $83 million, which, you know, and we want to do, we want to do more of this, and the plan is intended in part to do more of this, so kudos to your, to your colleagues. We also were successful this past year in recruiting nine very science-oriented faculty. Some of them are physician scientists, some of them are basic scientists. You can see here that they fit into the programmatic emphasis, but they're spread out over six or seven departments. And, you know, they're, you know, terrific, terrific people. You know, Brock Christiansen had just finished his post-doc, and, you know, that's why he's not funded on here. We don't, we don't want everybody to be funded, in the sense that we need to grow some of our own. And so, but a very successful year, nine recruits that brought with them almost four and a half million dollars a year. So it, this, I want to acknowledge these, these young folks this evening. Talk a little bit about buildings. Those of you who've been here for a number of years, remember all the iterations around the Williamson Translational Building. I think this is the iteration that we've settled on. This has not been approved by the board, but the board is very interested in it. And you can see the proposed location of this new building over at DH. It's the Translational Research Building, so it needs to be co-located with the hospital. We don't have the program in place, but we have some ideas. We're thinking six floors, we're thinking three floors of wet lab space, the upper three floors, a floor for clinical pathology in the hospital, a basement with mechanical, maybe a vivarium and some cores, and then a main floor, which we think will house TDI, some delivery science synergy, clinical trials office, bioinformatics, biostatistics, and hopefully a nice auditorium. Still in the planning phases. We have to figure out how we're going to pay for it, but I think that the leadership of the college and the board are very, understand that, that, you know, you need space to deliver on these, on these, on this vision. This one's a little further along, and not in the sense of coming out of the ground or anything, but I think in the, in the sense that we have a little bit more of a funding plan. This is the, what we'll probably call the new biomedical quadrangle to orient you. This is the new life sciences building. I'd like to say the new Remsen Vale, but not yet. But you can see here that this, this building has replaced Gilman Dana. And we're hoping this is open in early 2015. There's some asbestos abatement to do in Dana, and we got to find a home for people in Dana, you know, before we start demolition. But this is a very interesting building. I guess this is College Street, you know, right here. But it's kind of in three segments, and the center of it, maybe I'll just show it to you here. The center part will be a large three, four-story forum area that can be used for all sorts of meetings, big lectures, and so on and so forth. The more recent change is to put in this portion here, some of our social science colleagues, sociology, and some of the social science disciplines that complement medicine. And then the portion up here, this is just a schematic, will house TDC, TDI, medical school administration. But I think the best part of it is it's designed to, it's very open space-oriented, designed first and foremost to encourage interactions between the students and the faculty. We're experimenting with new kinds of space that promote learning and collaboration. And I'm hoping that in 2015, this is where we have our graduation for the medical students, right here, this big, open space that can be everything from large receptions to concerts. Probably not in the winter, big screen here. A state-of-the-art café, state-of-the-art library. We're very excited about this, about this new, new building. Again, both of them are three and a half, four years away, but, but they're on, they're on the horizon. Leslie and her team have done fabulous work on, on looking at ways to reward and recognize people. How do we promote people in a, in a contemporary sort of sense? And, and I guess it's been my view and the view of her team that we need to broaden the definition of scholarship and find ways to acknowledge our faculty, find ways to reward and recognize teaching better than we do today. And if you look at the people here, I mean, these are some of our great faculty, and their contributions are very, very diverse. So you've got top-of-the-line basic science, you've got top-of-the-line clinical research, you've got people that have made enormous contributions in quality and safety, you've got great examples of team science, you've got great examples of people that are leaders in the global health space. And this young woman is, is one of our second-year students, whose name is Tessa Winter, and she just published a book with Greg Fairbrothers, who's one of the Tuck faculty, on entrepreneurialism, in other words, taking an idea to success. So we want to also be able to acknowledge people who do innovative things in that particular space. Let's talk briefly about TDI and start by acknowledging the really incredible work by, by Jack Winberg, who was recently named by Health Affairs as the most influential health policy researcher in the, in the past 25 years. I've been asked to serve as the interim director of TDI for the next several months, while Jim gets into his new duties. We're meeting every Wednesday morning, and the fundamental question is, you know, what, what is the best, how do we optimize TDI's performance and effectiveness? You know, what is the best way to integrate TDI into Dartmouth, the medical school, the hospital? How does it partner with TDC? And the conversations are, I think, very, very healthy, and I'm very, I'm totally optimistic that we're going to come up with the, with the, with the best solution. Faculty Council, let me just say two things about Faculty Council. To my knowledge, we've never had a Faculty Council at Dartmouth Medical School. The LCME and the AAMC like it when you have a Faculty Council, so we've created one. And we've not so much created it to pacify them, we've created it because it's a, it's a body of faculty with representatives from every department and some of the centers and institutes that can advise me. And I think the chairs get that, that your faculty are probably more likely to say things differently to me when you're not in the room. Don't take it personally. But, but I think that the Faculty Council will be, I think it's going to be a critically important group to communicate back to your faculty. So we're just getting that off the ground and trying to decide what their primary roles and responsibilities are, so. We're fortifying DMS advancement, and just want to show you some of the new people that we've, that we've recruited. This is the, the group of people that focus on philanthropy, marketing, and communications. We're, we're going to continue to do this together with the, with the hospital as one single advancement unit. These are people that will have primarily a DMS focus, but we're going to continue to have people that have a Chad focus and a Norris Cotton focus and a hospital focus. We think the stories are most powerful when they're told across the medical center. And obviously, this is a critical group of people to leverage, given that we're growing our Board of Overseers. Jennifer Humphrey, here on the end, is our Administrative Director of the Board. You know, as that group grows, it becomes really important to have somebody who can manage them, if you will. And so, I'm very, very, very pleased with this team Derek got here two years ago, Gary, two days ago, and Gary starts in two days. So again, this is a group that will work with Brian's team to, to move forward. And remember, the sustainability piece of this plan, which I'm going to show you in a minute, does require we do a lot of, a lot more fundraising. I'll finish with this slide, and then maybe have a few questions, and then we'll go to Tim. Paul Greeley has really done, with his team, a huge amount of work, and I wanted to, to just show you the funding model. So this is a 10-year plan through about 2020, and the board appropriately wants to do it in phases. So we're going to do it in sort of three-year plans. The first phase has been approved, so we're moving forward with some of the very things we've talked about today. The reason I, this slide is very compelling to me, but if you look at the blue line, the blue has been, you know, DMS actuals for the past five years. So you can see that we had this dip around '08 that Bill Green did a marvelous job of getting us out of. The red line is what, what we think will happen if we do nothing. And it's not, it's not, it's not an option. If we continue to do nothing, if we just sort of business as usual, no new investments, no new buildings, no new recruits, other than what we would ordinarily do, you know, over, over 10 years, we lose $115 million. Probably not a viable option. Now, you see, the green line, you know, has a big trough too, right? But it spikes back up here in about seven or eight years. So there's a big chunk of space here under this horizontal line, which represents years where we'll be in a deficit. And so you might say, "Well, how can you afford that?" It's very clear, I think, to me and the Paul's people and to the board, that, that we have to invest, and that we're going to have to go into a deficit for a little while. So, but the plan shows that towards the end of the decade, we, you know, really break, break through. So this is a plan that involves, again, need approval from the board, about 75 new scientists, two new buildings, growing our marketing communications with the hospital very strategically. One of the things it involves, which we did not show, is a significant increase in the size of the graduate programs. And the way we're going to fund this is through a combination of money from the college that they've committed, money from DMS Central reserves, which is not huge, but is solid, money from departmental reserves. I mean, all those nine people we, we just recruited was a combination of resources from the departments, from the DMS Central, often the Cancer Center, so we're going to continue to do that as a, as a team. Somewhere about halfway here, we think philanthropy will start to kick in, new grants and indirects will start to kick in. And if this all goes according to plan, and it won't, but that's okay, you know, we hope to see a very exciting future out here. This is a plan that will take our research funding to $180 million, maybe even $200 million. Right now, we're at $137 million. And by the way, the $137 million is the highest we've ever had in, in research funding at DMS, so congratulations to all of you. Now, we know that we're going to drop over the next few years, because the 137 is predicated on grants that usually have a life of five years. And we know with the new pay line and the two-strike rule, that our baseline is going to drop. But the plan is intended to increase the number of our mega grants, recruit some new people, increase the productivity and effectiveness of existing investigators, and, you know, I think it's, I think it's a model that has really been stressed in a number of different directions. So, you know, that's what we're up to, and I think we're up to some good. You know, I've said this before, you know, we, we can only win as a You know, I've said this before, you know, we can only win as a team. And I hope the vision is big enough and compelling enough and exciting enough that each of you can find inside of that vision your own personal hopes and dreams realizable. And if we can all do that, then we'll be unstoppable. So again, thank you so much for making me and my wife and my family feel so welcome over the past year. I'm going to have, I'm going to leave time for a few questions, and then we're going to move very quickly to Tim and Laura. Questions? Maybe there will not be that many. Paul?
I've worked with kids that speed bumps can be fun.
Speed bumps can be fun.
Obviously, a lot of what you envision requires cooperation across, you know, a number of the institutions here, the medical center, the college, Thayer, the business school. Rather than asking it in a negative way, in a positive way, what have you seen that sort of gives you the optimism that's actually going to occur in a way that's been different than the past, you know, several decades?
Yeah, so Paul Holsheimer is one of our, one of those nine faculty that we had up there, and Paul came from Emory and is in the Department of Psychiatry and is just a star. He has two kids, Jasper and Sebastian. But, so Paul's question was, what have we seen that makes this look possible? And let me cite you a couple of examples. So with Jim Weinstein leadership and some leadership of some other people, in 12 months, a master's in healthcare delivery science between the medical school, TDI, and Tuck was put together and launched. That would take 12 years in some places, right? So that's just pure teamwork. The grant that Mark Israel, Keith Paulson, and other colleagues between Thayer and DMS, the $13 million nano grant, wouldn't have happened without, you know, either one. The Northern New England Psychiatric Consortium that Alan Green is creating between Dartmouth and, you know, the VA here, Manchester, and Maine, that doesn't happen without, you know, people working together. One of the things that Jim and I want to do is, and I think we're positioned to do that, is to take all of the theory that Jack Winberg started 40 years ago, people are finally starting to recognize that, and embed that theory into the hospital as practice. Because quite frankly, we need to become more efficient, we need to become smarter, and all of the lessons from TDI and delivery science will allow us to do that, right? So numerous examples. At the end of the day, you know, what you'll discover is, when you get to work with other people in these cross-school, cross-departmental collaborations, that's when it really gets fun. So thank you, Paul. Other questions? All right. Oh, yes. Hi, Heidi.
Hi. Can you do a best for the general fundraising goal?
Yes. So the question is a little bit about the general fundraising goals. I can only be general because we're just now beginning a series of conversations with Dartmouth, Carrie Pelzell, who's our senior vice president for advancement, on, you know, what is the size of the campaign, what portion of the campaign will be medical center. There's no question that having the president of the university and the Dartmouth Board of Trustees be behind us is going to be critical. So Mark and a number of others of us are starting to, I'm not going to pick, you know, what the big goal is. I'm hoping it's somewhere in the $2 billion range, and whether it will be 20% of it or 25% of it, I don't know. But Jim and I are committed to doing it together. We're, I think that, you know, I'm comfortable telling you that we hope the lead gift in the whole campaign is to name the medical school. On a whole lot of people in this room that can do that, but maybe one or two. We think there are maybe, we know maybe seven or eight people that are Dartmouth partial who could do that, but, you know, that's a big one. But, you know, obviously, taking the endowment in the medical school from $370 million or whatever it is, if we could take that to $700 million, that's the sustainable future piece that, you know, I'd like to leave the next dean with. We depend a lot on that. But also, you know, we've got a lot of work we need to do in the hospital. We, you know, we've got to, we've got to get a sustainable funding source for the Atlas. That's a high priority for Jim and myself. We've got to, we've got to get funding for medical education, we've got to name a bunch of these centers. But, yeah, it's all important. I'm going to stop and ask Tim and Laura to come up here because I want to, we're not going to get all the questions answered about curriculum reform tonight, so if you leave a little bit discombobulated, that's probably a good thing. We don't have all the answers. But Laura and Tim and, as I said, Joe O'Donnell, John Butterly, and literally, you know, eight of our students who are here have done a ton of work on this. And, you know, we're to a point now where nothing's designed. Nothing's designed. We have some principles we want to throw out to you and get your feedback. So come on up.
Can you hear me okay in the back? Okay, thanks. So first, I want to say thank you very much for giving us this opportunity to speak. It's very important to us to be able to, you know, really sort of have this be the first installment of a recurring conversation. I want to say thank you to Chip and also thank you to Joe O'Donnell for your leadership and your mentorship of me and Laura and the rest of the curriculum redesign group previously and going forward. I want to say the same thing to John Butterly, who couldn't be here tonight because of conflicting obligation, who's provided a lot of leadership to me and Laura and the rest, and so thank you to him, too. And what we're going to do is try to describe to you some of the motivations for moving into curriculum redesign, and then describe to you the process that we'll undertake with you. And so to begin, I want to have Laura Ostapinko start. She's a fourth-year medical student who I imagine many of you know. She's been a real leader among a class of leaders, people who are truly invested in leaving Dartmouth a better place than they brought it, and I really believe that you'll succeed in that, so let me let you start.
So I get to start by telling you some things that you probably already know. The first is that I have amazing colleagues. I could talk to you about their average MCAT scores, I could tell you about our acceptance rate, I could quote you the mean step-one scores. But those numbers don't even begin to capture how amazing my colleagues are. I have colleagues who have taught classics to high school students, they've published on anthracycline toxicity in survivors of childhood cancer, they've served in the Navy, they've served in the Peace Corps, they've written theses in philosophy. And when you talk to them, they don't often like to talk about what they've done. A lot of times, they're much more interested in talking about what they're going to do, their dreams for their future, their dreams for changing patient care, for changing healthcare delivery science, for the breakthroughs that they're going to make in the lab. The second thing that I'm going to remind you of, that you already know, is that DMS students love DMS. Almost since the first time they step up on campus, they're excited to be here. And I know this because I've held forums with each and every class year with the MDMBA's, with the MDPhDs. Students are so grateful for the welcome they receive from the faculty and the staff of Dartmouth. So given these two things, that I have amazing colleagues and that my colleagues love DMS, I found something very puzzling in the first term of my first year at Dartmouth. In the first term and first year, we have biweekly quizzes, and it was not unusual the evening before a quiz to meet a student sobbing in the hallways of Dana. It was not unusual to hear students ask during lunch conversations about whether or not it was all worth it. So I started to ask some questions. I wanted to know what was going on with my colleagues, and I thought maybe it had something to do with the curriculum. So I asked some questions about the curriculum. In a survey of the DMS class of 2012, in their first semester of their first year, I found that 65% felt they spent too much time in the classroom, 58% wanted more small group learning, and 51% wanted more problem-based learning. But I didn't think less time in the classroom was going to comfort the student sobbing in the stairwell, and I didn't think that more problem-based learning was going to answer the question of whether or not it was worth it. These weren't the right questions. So I teamed with Cindy Hahn, an MDPhD student, and we decided to ask different questions. We decided to ask about burnout. We designed a longitudinal IRB-approved study and enrolled the classes of 2009 and 2010. And I'm going to show you data about one subscale of burnout, which is cynicism. On the X-axis, there are time points from orientation till the end of second year. The Y-axis is a summary measure of cynicism. It's divided by the horizontal lines into low, medium, and high cynicism. The error bars represent the 95% confidence interval around the mean, which is for the entering classes of 2009 and 2010. And you can see that over the course of just the first two years, you have an increase in cynicism. This isn't a problem that is unique to Dartmouth. This is a problem that's being faced by medical education across the country. So what to do about this problem? Research is just starting on what interventions could actually start to turn this curve. There's some preliminary data out of Mayo and Harvard that suggests that, just like I think students in this room could guess, that another small group or less time in the classroom is not going to turn this curve. Studies suggest that rethinking, reimagining the learning environment, reimagining the curricular structure is what is going to turn this curve. So why? Why do we need to turn the curve? I think there's two very important reasons. The first is that students who are burnt out are not the doctors that you want to have on your care team. And the students that are in classes today, they're going to be the doctors of 2020. Students with high burnout are 11 times more likely to report a test has been ordered when it actually hasn't been ordered. They're three times more likely to commit plagiarism and 2.5 more times more likely to cheat on an exam. Those aren't the physicians that I want to be caring for my parents or children. The students of today are not only going to be the doctors of tomorrow, they're going to be the leaders of tomorrow, and we need them to hold on to their dreams. In essence, cynicism is a measure of whether students still believe in their dreams, still believe in what it means to not only be a doctor but to be a leader. We have problems facing us. We have problems in research, we have healthcare delivery issues, we have so many things we can still learn about patient care, and we need our students to partner with us and to be leaders in those fields. Beyond addressing the problem of burnout, beyond turning that curve, another reason to reimagine the curriculum is that students are not only going to need to continue to believe in their dreams to be the leaders of 2020, they're going to need new skills, skills that go beyond a broad and deep understanding of medicine, which we already give our students. This list, we could all agree on, will be, these skills will be an important part of practice in 2020. But the students in this room, all of the students of DMS, we want you to partner with us, to reimagine what medicine is going to need in 2020, and to reimagine the medical education that's going to get us there.
Laura is very persuasive, and Laura has data to back her up from Dartmouth and from elsewhere that the way we construct medical education needs to change. It needs to change to address some of the concerning data that we're seeing about medical student data. But I think even, you know, as Laura said very persuasively, medical practice is changing. And just as medicine now is different in 2011 than it was in 1910, when Abraham Flexner constructed the current shape of medical education around the country, so should medical education change. If Laura and her classmates and her predecessors and the data are persuasive, and if our mission is to improve the lives of people we serve through innovations in learning, discovery, and healing, why have we not said yes? I would argue that we have said yes. I know I work hard when I'm giving a lecture, giving a small group, mentoring an individual student, I work very hard to be a good teacher for them and a good mentor, and I know dozens of you in the room do the same thing. I don't think the answer to why have we not said yes is because we aren't motivated, because we don't have the skill set. I think it's because the structure, the system that we're working in precludes us from realizing the full potential of the teaching skills and the mentorship interest that we have here. And so we believe strongly that we need to redesign the curriculum. And so in order to approach that, we've constructed a matching mission for the curriculum redesign, to design an innovative curriculum that optimizes medical student education and sets a global standard for medical education. This is an audacious vision, but I hope to convince you that not only is it necessary, but it's completely within our reach. What would this kind of audacious, necessary curriculum look like? It would be truly patient and population-focused. At every step of medical education, students would learn with patients and populations right there. This would be truly integrated between the clinical and basic sciences, and I don't mean by this integrated topically so that what we're teaching separately matches, which we could certainly improve, but that teams of basic scientists and clinical scientists would work together to deliver together integrated material. Teaching would be more interactive. Would lectures continue? I hope so, because I think I would be out of a job if they didn't. But lectures would be de-emphasized in the curriculum, and a more integrative, more self-directed learning approach will prevail. There will be opportunities for students to develop individualized expertise in a field of their choosing and that matched their future career to match the broad general education that they receive. If a student is interested in helping health of populations in a global setting, for instance, they could receive specific matching training that is integrated into their medical school Their professionalism will be nurtured by empowering them with educational methods that are tailored to their needs and by allowing them to direct their career in a direction that fits their needs with our mentorship. Student well-being, I believe, will respond to this educational approach. But in addition, our students have said to us loud and clear that we need to implement this change in a way that that we need to implement this change in a way that explicitly takes their well-being into account. We can't simply add more. In doing this, there are innumerable strengths at Dartmouth that we need to leverage. And I've highlighted a few here that we can bring more to bear. We have an incredible collaborative community and that brings many of us to this area. If we can set a structure that allows us to really bring that to bear and mentor our students and see them develop our longitudinal relationships, that will make us an even better school and bring us to the level of world-class teaching. Healthcare delivery science can be implemented more fully into the medical school curriculum. We can leverage the world-leading researchers and teachers in that field that we have right here. Teamwork, both as a topic of expertise at Dartmouth and as a pragmatic step toward teaching, is something we can leverage more. We hear all the time from the directors of residencies who take our graduates that our students are citizens, that our students are excellent clinicians, but they know their role in the medical society that they're joining. If we can bring out these qualities in our teaching, I think we can make that our brand. Why now? Our learners have said this before. We've heard this before and probably thought it ourselves before. Practice is not newly changing, it has been changing more and more rapidly. But these are forces, but not new ones. Rand Swenson is leading the LCME effort. And of course, their increasing emphasis on this style of teaching is part of the major driving factor for this. Just as in 1910, Flexner's report shaped medical education, the Carnegie Foundation published in 2010, "National Guidance for the Structure of Medical Education." And this guidance included many of these values and urged us toward an integrated longitudinal clinical teaching style that, and it uses many of the strengths that we're talking about now. And, as if that wasn't enough, Dean Shoba has come with a vision to take us in that direction now. So what would the first steps in that process look like? First, this summer, with the leadership of Chip and Joe O'Donnell and John Butterley, we impaneled a representative group, a curriculum redesign task force, to get a handle on this problem. We have students from all four years. We have junior and senior faculty from the clinical and basic sciences. We have college, decal, and other professional school faculty, including TDI. We have outside and internal educational experts. We've done a lot of brainstorming. What should it look like? What would we dream up as a community that would really suit our strengths and our students' needs? We've also done extensive data gathering. So, we've worked with companies to figure out what facilitating information technologies could we use in a novel curriculum? What does the medical education literature tell us about the successes and failures of other innovative processes at medical schools? Chip hired educational consultants from outside to come in and evaluate our curriculum and come up with places that we really could leverage our strengths. We have, through the leadership of Rand Swenson and Ann Davis, impaneled dozens of students and faculty to go to other institutions and to talk with other institutions about their curriculum redesign processes and even their curriculum creation processes and asked them, what did work, what didn't work, how long did it take, how much did it cost, what did the team look like? What should our end product be? What, you know, the key thing here is not just to make change for change stage, but what will our medical students look like at the end? What will their skill set look like and how can that guide us? And together, we've sort of come to, you know, an emerging excellent database that will guide the process further. But, as Chip said, we don't have the answer. I think it would be wrong for a group of 20 of us, or a 40 of us, or a 60 of us to come up with great ideas behind closed doors and then give you the answer. This is a community of teachers and students, and everybody needs to participate in this process. So we need to hear from you to make sure that we get your ideas, that we get your concerns. So, we'll have monthly town hall meetings. We'll center these around specific themes so that we can make sure that we have a good focused discussion about how should we do a master's program? What should it look like? What are potential speed bumps? We'll have student forums. The students have already been spectacular about getting their students' feedback, bringing it to the group, hearing what some of the original ideas are, and then coming back and getting feedback on that. And we will continue those and we will do that with the faculty as well. In addition to those fora, we'll do departmental outreach. And some of the departments have already had those outreach presentations. We have clerkship directors and department chairs and faculty members on the committee and we'll reach out to those who are not. Brian Reed and Leslie Fall and his team are working together on facilitating technologies. And a key one is getting the Blackboard site ready so that we can be transparent about what we're doing. What are the medical literature so far? What are the assessments of the other schools? What is happening today so that you can reference that, independent of those sites? What is the goal? What do we envision being the output of this process? Well, I've told you what I think the curriculum would look like in broad outlines that you'll help me fill in. But what we anticipate is that we'll be more effective as teachers for our students because the structure that we're working in will facilitate that process. These students will be empowered. They will feel like they've kept their dreams alive, in part by having great mentorship, but also the ability to be empowered in their education and affect the course of their learning, thus preparing them to be leaders in 2020 in whatever field they choose to go into. If we can achieve those goals, we will be distinctive and we will set the global standard for education. So, we welcome your ideas, we welcome your questions, we welcome your concerns. Tonight is the first of many opportunities to do that, but I look forward to being in conversation with you over the time to come. Thank you. Bring it on.
Yes, sir. More of an observation, a question, I think, looking at the shape of the new curriculum. What struck me is how similar it looks to the old apprenticeship model in training people to do things. And I'd be curious to see if we develop this, how much of that sort of mentality, how we used to train doctors 200 years ago is incorporated in how we train them now with the new technologies and the new societies. Again, that's a question, it's more of, what you're describing is what we actually used to do. And if we went to this more formal curriculum and we've kind of gone down this other path, which has worked, looking back to somebody, instead of looking forward as much as you showed, looking back may actually be helpful as well.
So, is that on? How's that? Yeah, that's better. So, I'm going to paraphrase briefly, just to make sure everybody heard that, that, you know, we've had an apprenticeship system in the past of training people and aspects of that persist, but also there's been change such as wrought by Flexner in the medical education approach. And putting this reform process in that historical context, what was excellent about that apprenticeship process but perhaps lost? What is excellent about the current model and we don't want to lose? And what could be better? I found it incredibly informative to learn about the different approaches to medical education, both the new ones, but the ones that we could capitalize from that have been developed for 50 years, and to think about how could we bring those together to do the right thing. So I completely agree. Mark?
I guess I think of curriculum reform and curriculum as content. And, you know, maybe small classes versus lectures is curriculum. I don't know that much about it, but I'm just wondering, in terms of content and curriculum, I mean, I guess I would know better what the curriculum ought to contain if I knew sort of what I was training. And do you think that thoracic surgeons in 20 years are going to need a different skill set and sort of knowledge base than they currently have? That's so dramatically different that you need a new curriculum? As opposed to a new course in genomics or something like that? Or will a neonatologist have a totally different need or skill sets that we currently don't teach?
I think that's a great question. Maybe a way to, I can sort of come at that from two directions. I think one is that the intellectual content of medical practice is evolving, but the core itself, the facts that you need to know, is becoming increasingly less important to state in a lecture hall situation since it is now much more available. And so, we commonly say in the, you know, in conversations about education that the statement of fact is much less important than teaching students how to think and how to access the information that will allow them to test their clinical hypotheses. So in one way, things have evolved, but in another way, they're still the basic skill set that you need to do to function on the wards. But clinical practice itself around those facts has changed such that, you know, as you know, you and I work much more in teams than we would have decades ago. That we have multidisciplinary collaborative teams, that specialization has become increasingly the place so that even among physicians, we have to collaborate, but multiple team members are involved. And medical students need to be trained to be able to function well in a process like that. In addition, I think leaders in medicine, as most people in this room experience, have complicated careers. We have what we do when we have our white coats on and we're in the clinic. We also have what we do when we're teaching. We also have what we do as physician researchers. And constructing a medical education that trains people for that full package is part of that vision.
Can I make a try at that too, Tim?
Yeah.
You know, one of the other things we've considered, Mark, is that, you know, for instance, the person in 2020 that's going to be having a patient before them, right now, they require something like 10 or 12 bits of information to make a decision. And it said in 2020 or later, you'll need 100 bits of information that you deal with. And the human mind can't keep that the way we do it now. You can keep seven plus one is two to make a decision. But an oncologist is going to have to know about the genome, the phenome, you know, a whole bunch of things to be able to take good care of patients in 2020, 2025 and stuff like that. And if we keep going the way we're going, which is sort of put it in your head and spit it back out, we're not going to be preparing people who are going to be able to do the right kind of practice in the future. So we've got to change the mold to be able to have people utilize, you know, what's in the information, the knowledge world, to apply to the patients in front of them. And that's a big challenge. But the way we're doing right now isn't going to work in 2020, 2025.
As a student, I just want to kind of follow up on what Joe said. You know, in the here and now, we're talking about burnout. And, you know, in terms of adding to our curriculum, things that might help us in 20 years isn't necessarily my focus. It's more on what we're going to have now and the volume of material as a part of it, which is growing exponentially. And I can choose not to go to class right now and do all the self-learning I want to. I'm fine with that. But it's still not going to cut down on the time that it takes. And I don't know if maybe we shouldn't lock into a four-year program or what. I'm just curious if you had any thoughts on what Joe said about that topic.
As a student, do you want to respond to that?
So, is your primary question whether or not we want to push all this into a four-year program versus...
More that, how can we limit the stress on students? And a lot of it has to do with just the volume. I don't think any way we approach that necessarily gets to the core of that issue.
So interestingly enough, Derby and her colleagues out at the Mayo Clinic actually found that workload wasn't independently correlated with burnout. Instead, the highest correlation came from learning environment. So it's not exactly the amount, give us more. It's fine, I can take it. That's not it. It's that you have to give it to us with meaning, with purpose. We want to know that we're helping patients. We want to know we're changing the world. That's what takes away from burnout. And what's more, when you're talking about fitting it into the four years, the other data that's important to think about is that by changing the learning environment, there have been programs that have actually reduced burnout. And they haven't changed test scores. People are still getting the same scores, the same board scores, but burnout is going down. And why? It's mentoring. It's longitudinal experience. It's a program that's more like apprenticeship. So it's not that we have to teach different bullet points. We just have to teach possibly differently. The whole structure can be changed and can be more nurturing to students.
And I think one key piece of how to, you know, the logistics of how to construct a curriculum that I, that I think there is some consensus around is that if we are going to add more material and material that we haven't been doing justice to, healthcare delivery science, professionalism, for example, we have to make room for that. You know, students are very, very busy, learning a lot. And that is a fact of life in medical school and it should be challenging. But we have to make sure that it's appropriately challenging and that the things that we're teaching really are clinically necessary for people to learn and that that material is the real core of medical practice that we're teaching. And if there's material in the current curriculum, and I think there is, in my course and in other courses, that we could take out to make room for that core stuff, then we need to do it.
Excuse me. Just because I am privy to a lot of all of this, I think one of the most powerful things that we've discussed is how the community is going to be supported during this process. And so, the way that I try to think about the curriculum redesign is that we're really learning how to learn and learning how to teach better. Because part of what's happened is that we have had all this information amassed, et cetera, et cetera. And we've been doing it, we've been teaching and learning in such a way without really thinking about how we teach and learn. And I just wanted you to comment a little bit about that support. You know, basically, this isn't going to happen where we drop a new curriculum on DMS and say, figure it out. This is going to be a learning process for all of us and we're going to help the students learn how to learn in this new environment and help the faculty learn how to teach in this new environment. So I just wanted you to comment on that really quickly.
Yeah, that's an important point. I'm glad you reminded me to cover that. Not only do we want to make sure that the curriculum is constructed in true collaboration with the faculty and the students to make sure that we really do this in a way that fits Dartmouth's strengths and that we get the input that we need. But we also recognize that even once we all come to a consensus about what it looks like, that the process of teaching and the process of implementing a new curriculum and then continuing it requires faculty development ongoing over time to make sure that we continue to use the most innovative ways and that we have support to do this. And so that's a key piece of this dynamic that is so important. We can't achieve this without good faculty development. Other pieces of this are, we need to be able to figure out, what's the right way to evaluate students in this curriculum? What's the, what are the right pedagogies that'll help us deliver this method? And that's going to be true in the coming years and true for decades to come.
Thank you. Just a very brief comment and then I'll pass on to the workload issue. Is, you know, one of the things we've learned in psychiatry, and this is a pretty good database that shows it's less about the amount of stress somebody goes through. And it's more, how much can you control that stress or your response to it? And so the student crying in the hallway, it's less about having too much to do, more about, I don't, I'm not in control of this and I feel overwhelmed. And so, you know, part of getting students through it is recognizing there is a lot of information that they have to learn and we have to figure out how to do that. And providing the empowering, sort of the self-efficacy, you know, the other skill set to, how do you take charge of your learning as you eventually have to do as an attending physician? So it'll be a very, it'll be a fun process to sort of figure that out.
Absolutely. I see your hand in the back.
Can you give us a better sense of what your expectations are as far as the implementation pocket?
6:30, right? Aren't we done? Let me tell you this. I, I'd like to know that too. What we've been doing is, one of the big pieces of our assessments of the other schools who have implemented curriculum design is to go to them and say, for this flavor of curriculum redesign, what, how long did it take you to, in the case of NYU, implement a master's program within the four years of medical school? In the case of Harvard, implement a longitudinal clinical... In the case of Harvard, implement a longitudinal curriculum? And the word that we're coming back from a couple of those institutions with some of that data coming in, is that it takes a couple of years to make those changes. We're envisioning a larger change. But I don't think that we're going to change all four years of the curriculum in every way, all at once, on the same day. And so, what we're going to do, once all of that data is in, which is, those visits are finishing in the next couple of weeks, is to come together and make and articulate a much more clearer timeline of, this is the achievable thing in a year, this is the achievable thing in two years, this is the achievable thing over a longer span of time. So we'll be transparent about that.
Yeah, I think, Tim, the other thing to say, Anna, is, you know, we seem to have a goal that 2013 is the time will rule out, rule out the first year, whether we'll get there or not, the second year, so that the thing will evolve. I don't know whether we'll get there or not, but one of the wonderful things that we've seen happen so far, is because of the conversation, I think things are going to change in the curriculum as it exists. And so hopefully, we'll begin to be able to have more conversations about things we can change that will be conducive to the big change we want to see in whatever time we get to it. But it's ambitious to try and do this, and whether we'll reach the 2013 start of year one, I really don't know, and it's a daunting task.
Yes, sir.
Do you see a role for trial and evaluation, how we can evaluate the new curriculum?
Yeah, that's a great question, whether we might pilot pieces of this curriculum to make sure that our conception really works on the ground. And I think there are pieces of this reform that would be amenable to that sort of thing. Certainly, we already have some data from other institutions about some kinds of curriculum reform, and we can certainly use that. But other pieces are more uncharted ground, and we can learn more from that. So we're certainly open to that kind of discussion.
And students are committed to making sure there are clear outcome measures, so that whatever we do, we can see whether or not it's working, and that we can make adjustments in the future. Because in order for this to be, it's great to have an innovative program, but we want to set the standard, which means you got to make sure that your innovation is moving you in the right direction. So as part of this curriculum reform, and we hope to have the support staff that will actually allow us to really track outcomes.
Maybe what I can do is, oh, I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
Just to keep with that statement, how long are the outcomes going to be tracked? Because I think you'll have to follow people through residency and through practice in order to wonder whether or not the innovations were durable, and either made residency more effective as an environmental learning, or didn't, or were found to continue into the practice environment.
That's true. So come join the outcomes group and help us figure it all out.
I think that's going to be the toughest metric to ascertain, and if it can be ascertained, it'll be a spectacular achievement.
I agree. So I want to make sure that I link you with your representation. So first, stay tuned for imminent announcements about monthly town halls where we can continue this conversation. We will also be continuing to come to your departments and your clerkships to make sure that we hear from you, what you're thinking about, and update you on what we have so far. I also want to make sure that you hear again the names of the leaders in the specific initial core working groups. Greg Ogrentz is leading the group that's figuring out how to initiate the master's process. Rand Swenson is working on the core curriculum. Brian Reed is on technology. Nan Cochrane is on the longitudinal care part of it, and Kathy Pippas is doing the communications from us, from you, making sure that we're all talking. So thank you very much for giving us your feedback tonight, but also make sure that you get in touch if you have great ideas, you have concerns, whatever, we want to hear of.